Well, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like everyone to please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the true and holy for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shall we begin the roll call, please?
Jim Dombek.
Here.
Jane Shire.
Here.
Christian Hahn. Michael Levito. Chuck Murray Evans.
Here.
Alex Grados.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Present.
Norm is present.
Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as proposed?
So.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All here will say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved, Jones.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Evans?
Yes.
Grados?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Shire?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there a motion to approve the NIA consent agenda as presented? So moved. Got to race for second. Uh, moved and seconded, roll call.
Grados?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Shire?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, next item then would be young author awards. And, uh, it's always a pleasure to have our young authors with us to, uh, honor their work. And, uh, we have some goodies for them. Let me ask them to come forward. Nora Hamilton. Representing grades K through one. And this is Nora's book, The Dogs. This is really a nice book.
I love that book.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about it? Do you have both of these dogs or were they imaginary? Do you have Cooper and Eugene?
No.
No? You just thought them up in your head? Ah, that was a good story. Uh, her story is about a young lady who wants, um, has a dog already named Cooper and wants to get another dog. And, uh, her parents tell her in order for her to get the dog, she's got to do some chores and she's got to earn some money so that she can buy the dog, right? And so she does that and she, what makes her money? She cleans up after the dog. She takes the dog for a walk. And she finally earns enough money that she can go to the, to get another dog. And, uh, when she sees the dog, they fall in love at first sight. And, uh, she names the dog Eugene, right? Where'd you come up with that name? Okay, well, who's your teacher? And, uh, are your mom and dad here with you? Can we have them stand up and... Congratulations to you and to your daughter. We've got a plaque for you and a certificate. Well done. That's a great book. I really enjoyed reading it, so thank you.
No.
Uh, next would be our young author representing grades two through three. Uh, Nora Heem. Is it Heems? I think this year was the year of the detective mystery. Do you like detective mysteries, Nora?
Yes.
Yeah? Do you want to tell us a little bit about your story?
It's about a girl named Michael. And, um, she's a detective. And she finds this day to find her missing Halloween candy.
And she, she finds her missing Halloween candy. And then what happens when she gets back home?
Oh, she, oh, starts to know about it. And she loses her glasses. Um, so she...
Ah, somebody took her glasses. So she has to go find those too, uh-huh. And what made you write about a detective? You like detectives.
Yes.
And are you kind of a detective?
Yeah, I solve mysteries and I have some candy.
Yeah, she said she solves mysteries around the house sometimes. And, and, and you like to write about them. That's really good. You did a great job. It's, it's really nicely illustrated. Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Ryan.
Mrs. Ryan? And, uh, Nora, are your mom or dad here with you?
Yes.
Can we have them stand up and...
Are you?
There they are, okay. And we have a plaque for you and a certificate. And I really enjoyed reading your, your book. Well, thank you. Uh, next would be our young author from, uh, grades four through five. And that's Camden Morris. And Camden, you wrote about a detective too.
Yes.
Uh-huh. Must have been detective stories going around pretty heavily, huh? Do you want to tell us a little bit about it?
Well, it's about avocados. It says on the cover that it's trying to find where the work, which is like, I guess, uh, really famous, like, let's just say a sculpture in outer world. It'll be like something that's in their world, so.
Yeah, like a prize exhibit in the museum, yeah.
Yes. And they're trying to find it. And he was trying to find it with his friend, uh, post. And then they find it, so, yeah.
And they help out, uh, who do they help out along the way?
The police, they helped. Well, the police found it, but they gave them the idea. So they helped the police and...
And how did he find it?
Uh, he found the key to the vault behind the painting.
Ah, so, yeah, they figured out that, uh, the, uh, the prized fort never left the museum.
Yes.
Uh, they just hid it somewhere else where they could come back and get it later on and nobody was suspicious, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So it was, uh, it was all taking place in the vegetable kingdom. What made you write about vegetables of all things?
It wasn't just vegetables, but it was because I saw...
That's right, there is toast.
Yeah, I, uh, I saw an avocado on my table. So I was like, okay, that's, whatever, I'll write about that, so. And I needed an idea, so.
Yeah, well, that's great that you were able to just look at something on the table and get an idea from that and, and build it into a story, and a winning story at that. Who's your teacher?
Ms. Lockton.
Okay. And, uh, are your mom or dad here with you?
Yes.
Want to stand up? You get, you get some praise in this too. And a plaque, so. And thank you for, uh, a great book and a great read. And write some more. Write some more detective stories. Last but by no means least, we have, uh, our young author from grades six through eight, Fiona Holtz. And Fiona, you took, you took a little bit of a different course. You, uh, you wrote poetry.
Mm-hmm.
And, and what made you do that? I mean, what was your inspiration?
I've always been a fan of poetry and I've been writing it for quite a few years. And I just really love how to put all my feelings on the paper.
And you have a deep, I, I've forgotten now, was it about five or six poems in there?
Yes, and they're all about different experiences from my life this past year.
Right, I, yeah, well, I could tell. They're very, they're very personal, but they're very personable, so. They're very well done.
Thank you.
Who's your teacher?
Um, I'm on Team Destiny, so my ELA teacher is Mr. Lyle.
Ah, okay. And, uh, are your parents here with you?
They're over there.
Come on, you got to take the praise while you can. And, uh, I found it very enjoyable. I don't often read poetry, but, uh, it was nice to, to, to have some to read. And, uh, we have a certificate for you and a plaque.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just want to say thank you to, uh, all the teachers that inspired, uh, their students to participate. To the parents who, uh, who did the same thing and, and actually probably had to, uh, bear down with them a little bit and make sure that they got the job done. And, uh, I just want to say that every student, uh, every family, every teacher that has a student that enters in this competition, comes out ahead. Um, the, the writing, if you could read the submissions that, that these kids make, uh, it's an amazing, it's an amazing thing and helps to restore your faith, uh, in, uh, in the world around us. So, um, to all those who participated, congratulations. And, um, keep on trying. And eventually you could be up here in front of everybody else and, uh, getting plaques and, and certificates as well, so. Thank you. Next item is audience to visitors. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board this evening? Okay? You have three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sycamore residents, welcome. Superintendent Walters, nice to meet you. President Dombek, board. My name is Ron Milner and I am a 20-year resident of Sycamore. My two daughters are Spartans. They graduated and they're doing great. And the reason I'm here, I was at the last meeting and I couldn't speak because I got late because of a storm. But the reason I'm speaking now is because we did a survey and one of the questions in that survey was question number five, which asks, what can we do for our students once they're out of school? How can we help them? And I think that's very good and very profound. And I think that's a good use of time for our dollars. I think the most important thing that we can do for our students is teach them financial literacy. I was never taught that in school. My parents didn't teach me and I finally went to the school of hard knocks. And that school will teach you one way or another. And it taught me. So for the past 12 years or so, I've been working for my company. I started a business, it's called Bootle. And what we do is we offer financial literacy courses to schools, libraries, churches, anyone that wants one. We recently did a financial literacy workshop at the Cal High School. They loved it. So what I'm asking is, I'm going to pass off this information and, uh, if you can pass it out to superintendent.
Yeah, I'll make sure they get it.
This is a serious subject. Before I came here, I stopped at a retail store and I met a young gentleman there. He, he had graduated from here in 2020. And I asked him, I said, did you learn anything about financial literacy in high school? And he said, not really. He said, there's an economics course, but I didn't really learn anything. I said, do you know how to buy a stock? He said, no. I said, do you know how to buy a new mutual fund? He said, no. I said, that's important because what's going to happen is you're going to work at this retail store for many, many years and you don't have to. So I used to come to this board meeting all the time. I'm literally reaching out my hand, not to give me something, but to let's partner together. Because this is a very serious subject. And from what I can gather from the people who attended my workshops, they say, Ron, you're phenomenal. How do you know so much? I said, I taught myself. And I would like to work with this superintendent in this school district and see what we can do to help these students. Thank you.
You're welcome. Does the superintendent have your contact information?
Yes, everything, everyone's had the most, we take this all there. Thank you, president.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, Ian Wheeler, Sycamore Fire, uh, 22222, Air Force Road, Sycamore. Chief Gilmore cannot be here this evening. He had a prior debus, so he apologizes if he can be here. But thank you for having me. Uh, dear Mr. Wilder and Sycamore School District Board members, we at the Sycamore Fire Department would like to express our deepest gratitude for the unwavering support that the Sycamore School District has extended to the Sycamore Fire Department over the course of many years. Your ongoing commitment to ensuring the safety and well-being of our community does not go unnoticed. And we are truly grateful, uh, for the partnership. The collaborative efforts between the Sycamore Fire Department and Sycamore School District have significantly contributed to enhancing emergency preparedness, response capabilities, and widespread education throughout the community. Whether it be through equipment donations, fire safety education incentives, or providing access to facilities for drills and simulations, your support has been invaluable in helping us fulfill our mission of safeguarding lives and property. You have continuously opened your doors for our careers to train for mass casualty incidents. You allow our teams to enter your schools each year to promote fire safety and educate young minds about the importance of community safety. You've helped with equipment needs for our training exercises or open house activities. Last fall, the donation of two retired school buses were the center of our training exercises and were extremely well received by our members. Finally, most recently, when we were mourning the loss of a friend and family member on our department, you and your transportation department, with the help of Ms. Lance and, uh, the school bus drivers, without hesitation, provided seamless transportation for guests, family, and community members who came to pay their ultimate respects. Please accept this gift as a token of our appreciation for your continuous support and collaboration. Your generosity and partnership have a profound impact on our ability to serve the community and we look forward to continuing our partnership for many years to come. Thank you once again for your support. It is truly an honor to work alongside the Sycamore School District in our shared mission of keeping our community safe. So I have, uh, just a very small token of our appreciation to conduct for you guys. If I could talk for just a second. The relationship that we have with the fire department is the, the police department, the emergency responders in the area, whether it's training, um, preparedness, we had a tabletop exercise that we participated in the fall where multiple agencies were there, um, talking about how we respond to an incident. But when the fire department lost a fellow fireman, we were glad, um, to support them and, and help shuttle people back and forth between, uh, buildings. I don't know if you know this, um, but many, I think all of the fire, the, the bus drivers who, who don't, who, who were there and shuttling people back and forth donated their time. They didn't get paid for that, they didn't want to get paid for that. And I just, I think that just highlights, um, how much we appreciate everything the fire department does. They were glad to do it. I'll make sure that they see this. And, uh, thanks for being here. Thank you so much.
We actually have some... The drivers can stand up back there. Mrs. Lance is going to be here tonight, but we do have some bus drivers here, so thank you guys. Thank you for coming. Just a really quick photo. Ian, Ian, can you get in the photo too?
Sure.
Mrs. Lance asked me for a photo. If I don't get it from Mrs. Lance, it's going to be really bad for me. Five, six, seven. Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Great, great. Thank you. Seriously, we, we can't thank you enough.
It's our pleasure.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, I appreciate it. Hope it's a quiet one. Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else who wishes to address the board this evening? Okay, we'll move on then to foyer requests. There are none pending right now. Is that right? It's a good thing to see you.
Yep.
Move on then to suspension reports. It's not even warm enough yet to, to have the list be quite that long, but...
We're really close to spring break.
Yeah.
Really close and not there yet, but...
You could almo, you could almost tell just by the, just by the, uh, the way things tend to accelerate a little bit. Committee reports. Committee reports.
Spartan Senate met at the beginning of the month. Actually had kind of a lengthy discussion there. Seeing who else. So on the old business section, they, um, the school had their blood drive, or no, sorry, the school has their blood drive scheduled for May 1st. So if anyone's interested in that, reach out, um, to the principal. They discussed opening back up the North foyer again for students to enter the building because earlier they had, um, there was sort of a debate among students and staff if that's beneficial or not or, or safety concerns. But it was decided that the majority of the students seemed to be interested in it, so they'll open it back up. And then, um, they've started their practice of, um, sort of extrinsic motivators to get students to come to class on time. By having a quarterly raffle, I think it was quarterly, where there's certain prizes such as priority parking or AirPods that students are entered in to win. And then during their stretch hour, they can report to the main office to collect that. Let's see what else. Students that are... Students that have, um, a lot of intentions accumulated are now placed on the list, thanks to the dean for this, where they're supervised especially during passing period. Because what it, what seems to happen is students will sort of wander and not come back. So now they have a, a list of around 75 students that they, um, they sort of look out for to ensure that they're staying in their class to make sure that all these kids, um, get the most out of their school day possible. They've seen some instances of vandalism in the bathrooms again, which is something that was popular during my time here. That seems to have ramped up. It seemed to have tapered off a little around COVID. Let's floor it back up, so they did shut down at least one of the bathrooms. Additionally, Mrs. Stuckard asked for some student input on the sustainability and wellness committees. So some students will be reaching out to her, um, if they're interested in that. At the end of the year, Principal Swanson wants to get some feedback on how this year went and, um, see what areas of growth they can capture and then try to improve this school year next year for students. They also discussed the turnabout dance. We don't really, it's not super important. There was more of, do they want it? Do the net want it? Do they want to call it the turnabout? Because it's, it doesn't end up actually being a turnabout anymore. It's more of just a, a fun session. And finally, um, students would like to have some more world language options. However, Principal Swanson said that it's challenging to find someone that's willing to work only at a point two or point four FTE because there's not a desire for, um, multiple sections of a class such as French. That's why it was cut. But something that is sort of a new revelation is software that could teach this course and then you just need someone to monitor it. But perhaps some students could be working on French, others on Japanese, others on Mandarin, all in the same room. You just have one person sort of monitoring that. That's something that came up that they're going to investigate further. Got a lot done in 15 minutes. That is impressive.
That, that all took place in 15 minutes?
We just fly right through it. It's like 15 to 20 minutes, yeah.
That's impressive.
Planting and zoning met last night. And up for consideration was a request by, uh, Mr. Patel for a special use permit for sale tobacco and related products at 404 West State Street, uh, which is the old 7-Eleven locations. So his plan is to basically open a convenience store similar in style to the 7-Eleven, um, and to offer tobacco products in the same manner that 7-Eleven did behind the counter, et cetera. So wasn't a lot of, uh, a lot of question and answers and questions about what signage and, and other things would be going on. But it's all going to be pretty consistent of what was there before. Because this is Zone C2, it does require a special use permit for that, the four, or the commission unanimously recommended it. Would that be granted so we can get the state approval listings for everything else? That was the only item this week.
Any other committee reports? Well, then we'll, uh, move on to, uh, Superintendent for Business Services Report.
Yep, so tonight I have the first reading for student fees and building use fees. So I'll touch on the student fees first. We just have a couple of changes, uh, for this upcoming school year. The first one is increasing the instructional fee for our A classes at the high school. We run classes either on a semester or, um, there are some that are full year classes. So Mrs. Pointer did a great job in, um, putting a five-year plan together for the equipment that those classes use. We have some aging equipment and so just looking at, um, having to replace those. And so her recommendation to Mr. Swanson at the high school was to increase, um, those fees, uh, by either $5 for the semester or 10 for the full year classes. Uh, so that was the only change at the high school level. The next change would be our Little Spartans program. So currently that program is, uh, four days. And so our tuition is based on the number of days, um, in a month. We charge $1.95 a month for that. As you know, we'll be moving, uh, to a five-day model next year, uh, with our preschool for all. And so naturally that fee will increase with the students being there for five days. So the recommendation is to go to $2.50 for that. And then also our Oscar program. We have a new director, um, that started with us this year. So she's done a really great job in, um, analyzing that program and the costs associated with that. And so I provided a memo to you guys from, um, Mrs. Newhouse on her, um, recommended changes to that program. Looking to increase a couple of the, of the costs, getting rid of some of them, um, that either aren't utilized or other programs don't necessarily use. And then also she's looking to offer, um, some new events for our Oscar students, um, some parent night out, um, events. And so, um, she's got to charge for that where parents can drop their kids off from six to eight. And childcare will be provided for them. And then lastly, our Oscar junior program, which coincides with our Little Spartans program, looking to raise that fee also because those students will be going to five days a week as well. I did include in the slides too, like I do every year, the, um, survey that we work with our corresponding colleagues around here. We always put together that survey just so you guys can see what the instructional fees are, um, around Sycamore. And so tonight's just a first reading, Jim. Typically, the board brings this back for a second meeting. Did I answer any questions that you guys have?
Can families still do AM and PM Oscar and just pay the rate for both? It's not, they can't turn back?
Yep, yep, they can still do both. We actually don't have a lot of students that take advantage of both AM and PM. And when you look at the surrounding areas that have daycare, they don't offer a discount for doing both AM and PM. So financially, just it makes sense to not continue to do that, so.
Sure.
Unless there's an objection, we'll, we'll leave this out there for first reading and allow people to co- to comment and bring it up at our next meeting for a second reading.
Okay. Um, and then the next thing I have is building use. So as you guys know, our buildings are used a lot. The high school's pretty much open all day, every day, it seems like. So we also offer rentals to outside individuals that come from us. And so those are the fees that I'm bringing to you guys tonight. I don't have any recommended changes to those fees. Most of our building is used by our own students. So in the pie chart here, you can see that Priority A, those are all our clubs and activities that are utilizing our buildings. Then that Priority B would be any Sycamore organization that utilizes it. So SYFL, Sycamore Youth Baseball, those types of entities. Priority C would be non-for-profit, so that are located within Sycamore or I guess could be located in Sycamore. So we have a couple of those every year that utilize it. And then D would be for-profit entities that use it. So there's different fees based on what priority you fall under. And like I said, I don't have any recommended changes. Everything works well with what we have, so. Any questions on that?
Given a lot of changes, I'd make a motion to waive the first reading for building use fees as presented.
I'll stop and that.
So, roll call?
Cranes?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Stomba?
Yes.
Russian Harry?
Assistant Superintendent for Richard.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, today we've invited Mr. Rice to come talk about Winter Math, just an update there. And then Portrait of a Spartan, which he's covered a little bit with you, but to go a little further in depth on that.
Yeah, no, you guys make a good team, so I'm gonna let you guys hang on a little while.
Like, like Nick said, I'm here to kind of talk a little about our map, winter administration, as well as then give you kind of an update on our grad profile. This is just kind of a broad level overview of the growth that happened in our district, at least with K through eight, on the MAP scores this, this, um, winter. Top ones are math, the bottom ones are ELA. I'll talk a little bit more on the next slide. I'm sure there's a lot of people wondering about that fifth grade class. You walk that back, they were in kindergarten and first grade right when COVID hit. Obviously, some pretty formative years in reading, but there's so much that goes into this growth score attainment. It's not, some kids that might also, that could also happen. We had a lot of extra smart kids that were rocking it because it's really hard for them to attain growth. But something tells me that's not probably what happens because of their history. So if you flip to the next slide, most of our grade levels did meet their expected growth. The way that works is in a very kind of quick version of that, they look at what a student's done in the past. They look at what similar students in that cohort nationwide would look like and they kind of put a growth score for them. That can be overridden by teachers if they want to talk with students or set a different goal. I believe most people probably leave it at where the, the MAP people put them, but that's how those, those growth targets are created. Math's currently outpacing our ELA results. That makes sense because we're much further into our math revision and kind of adopting some new processes and philosophies in math than we are in ELA because that work started a little later. You can look on the board. I won't go through all those different things, but we've really worked hard in that math curriculum and now we're doing that in ELA as well to try to really hone in on what our essential outcomes are, to talk about what curricular resources would help us really meet those. We just had a day earlier this month where we had seven different publishers in and we're in the process of about to narrow that down to the ones we want to pilot for next year. ELA is soon to follow that. We've spent a couple of years kind of building our base and talking about kind of just what the landscape looks like. You've probably heard me say this before, but you know, there's kind of a shift in how reading is to be taught. Illinois put out their state literacy plan and it really switches gears from a balanced literacy approach, which we have used in the past, to the science and reading-based approach, which they say we have to do now, but it's good practice and we were headed that way anyway. So it's kind of reaffirming to know that that's also kind of where the state wants us to go. We want to build out similar structures and resources for staff, just like we have in MAP. Lisa Winters and the math specialists are rock stars when it comes to putting together all these different tools for teachers to use. And Andreas, excuse me, Andrea Shehan and our reading specialists are going to be doing the same sort of thing. And right now there already are. They're going into different classrooms and trying to help students grow. But we're going to formalize that a little bit more and kind of keep going with that. One of the major ways we use these MAP scores is our elementary day-to-days. It also happens at the middle school, but it kind of happens more kind of as part of those class grade level meetings. There's not kind of this pull-out structure that we have at the elementary. So because I know a lot of resources go into making that happen, I just wanted to give you a little bit more of a, kind of a look into what that was. So this time around for our winter MAP kind of day-to-days, the goal was to kind of get teachers to talk about assessment and how are they using these to drive their instruction. But it's not just MAP because MAP's only given three times a year. So what other tools are they using in their classrooms? Is it summative assessments, formative assessments, talking with students, SEL data, things like that, that they can use to get that picture of the whole child? And so our, our, our coaches, our MTSS staff, our building administrators, they worked with that, those grade level teams in their buildings. And a lot of that work was centered around this, this transformative ten concept, which I'll get to in the next slide. And the goal for all teams was to write, uh, a, that's weird, a goal was to write a goal. The process was designed to lead teams to write a goal for the students tied to one of those transformative ten instructional strategies that could be supported by our MTSS staff, our instructional coaches, their colleagues if they needed to, to use that data and see how it kind of drives their instruction. So if you want to just click to the next one for me, please. The transformative ten is an article, I mean, there, you can get to these strategies in multitude of ways, but this was from MAP and it talks specifically about, okay, you've got these reports and this is what it's telling you about your students. Here are some strategies that you can utilize based on what your data is telling you. So again, trying to get more bang for our buck out of that assessment, making sure that the staff is trained to use it. And as they're looking at those reports, they feel like they've got resources to actually put into practice what they're seeing and what they want to do to fix, uh, fix whatever they're seeing that they want to work on. I did provide you kind of the original article from them. Molly's, excuse me, Molly Tucker from our MTSS program put together like a video introduction that they shared with, with staff. I included that for you as well. And they watched that before their day-to-days and then that was kind of their focus. Not every team got there because the discussions were rich and sometimes they took a little longer than they needed. And those groups will follow up with and have followed up with, try to get them to that goal-setting place. So I kind of just told you most of this, so we can kind of stick that one and we can stop there if those, if there's questions before I move on to the Portrait of a Spartan.
Maybe it's just something I'm not understanding about your, your role here. Are, are you just more focused on pre-K through five?
But the, the day-to-days really only happen there. So we pull all the teachers out, have to sub them out and do all those things for the, the elementary. At the middle school is where the MAP stops. It doesn't exist at the high school. So they really, that's kind of built into their grade level team meetings and the MTSS team here kind of works with it. But it's kind of more like an ongoing process. They do write goals around it. They've got an, an SEL committee that uses some of that data, a school improvement team. But it's more kind of just embedded and just knowing how many subs we use and how much time is spent on those days. I would feel remiss if I didn't kind of let you know what all that time and resources are going for. That's why I focused a little more on elementary here. But this is more useful, I think, the younger a student gets because you, if you go back to, and you don't have to, Nick, but if you guys go back to that first slide, you'll see the expected growth kind of tapers off the older students get. And so by the time they're in fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, they're still giving us information that we can use, but they're not growing as much. So those assessments aren't giving us as rich of data. So what they really rely on more at those upper levels are classroom assessments, different IAR, things like that, more so than maybe MAP. The elementary really uses those more, so.
What, what I think is interesting though with the, um, with, at the elementary level is the sort of comparison to the state level. Is there any metric, and one thing I brought up is GPA, maybe that's not the best one, but some sort of metric where we could compare students at the high school here to compare, just to see where they're at compared to the rest of the state?
IAR gives that to us. So, but that's only a once-a-year test. They'll take that, well, they're taking it now. And IAR gives that for middle school and then, I'm sorry, you asked about high school specifically. That would be the SAT suite of assessments and they still only give that once a year. It, it's constantly a battle for us. I mean, just having a high school background, that's a, it's kind of a frustrating thing for a high school teacher because we don't have those kind of long-term assessments that we can benchmark throughout the year. But most programs just don't go that high, so it's really hard to find those. There are some out there, but there's, the jury's kind of out on how effective they are. I'm sure Mr. Swanson would say like, yeah, give us something. We'd love to have it. It's just finding the right thing and what teachers can actually make use of. I think just the nature of a middle school and high school course lends itself to a lot more formative assessment. Well, they all do, but I think that's what the high school and middle school staff really base a lot of their instruction on, as do the elementary teachers. But they have this MAP data point that's also really helpful to them.
What recourse are you taking for the fifth graders that appear to not be doing so good in the ELA?
So that's what the goal-setting was all about. I mean, so I talked to also about kind of shifting to that science and reading approach. So there's a lot of kind of philosophical shifts happening. There's also kind of really narrowing it down to these kids and what do they need sort of happening at each different school. I also think, you know, there's kind of a debate over like, what is the validity of these winter MAP scores? A lot of schools in the, around us will say like, they dip in the wintertime and then they come back up in the spring. So I think the true analysis will be in the spring when we see that fall to spring growth and can see, you know, was this really a, a pattern? Is this where our kids, do they really go down or was that kind of a, the winter dip that sometimes occurs? So I'll probably be back in the spring, I'm guessing, and I can talk about those and hopefully we see those fifth graders achieving much higher.
That was going to be my second question, but you already answered it.
If you allow me back, I'll be here.
Okay, great.
Any other questions?
Well, is, is there, is there some standardized way to evaluate the progress of our middle schoolers and our high schoolers? Because you know, that, that chart, as you said, it just dips.
Yep. So, middle school has IAR and they also have MAP at the middle school. So those are kind of standardized and benchmarked outside of our data, our, our, our local data. High school's got the SAT suite. I'm trying to think if there's really anything other than that that's benchmarks outside of our district. And I don't think there really truly is. The ISA, I guess we could use that for science because we, I'll always plug science when I get the chance. They rock those scores. So that's kind of their version of the IAR, which is more built around math and English. And then there's the Illinois Science Assessment, which is built around science. So those two ones are really kind of what we give at that level that, that are, we can compare students across the state.
I, I, I guess I'd kind of like to see the, those results.
Well, those, they're in the midst of taking those assessments right now.
To see if they make up the difference between, you know, between
Yep.
what MAP is showing.
Yeah, I'd be happy to bring some of those back. I mean, if we, if I brought them now, we'd be looking at last year's group. We'll probably get the results from IAR over the summer or late spring, hopefully, if the state kind of keeps up. And I'd be happy to bring those back when they're in and kind of do some analysis of those two.
Is there anything like MAP that we can use on our own, you know,
At those levels.
without having to wait that long to get the results because that's really not effective.
True, I, I agree with you there. I, there's been a lot of conversation ever since the dawn of PLCs. That's what I, so I worked at the high school when kind of professional learning communities rose up. Like that was the, kind of what launched me into my career because I really got engaged in that work. And from that, like, there was a lot of conversation around writing our own assessments at like a, a department level. And I can speak only to the high school for this one because I was there and part of those discussions. I think that would probably be our best bet. So as we go through the PLC process and departments kind of hone what their essentials are and what they expect from students, you know, if they, if they're able to write some assessments, then maybe, maybe they're not exactly the same from grade level to grade level or maybe they are. But I think that's going to give us our best, but obviously that lacks that ability to kind of benchmark against anyone outside of our district. You can use finals at the high school a little bit, but you know, they're not really indicative, I think, of all the student growth that you see. But I, our, our departments do kind of look at what those have done year to year to year to year and they use that to evaluate their curriculum. So that kind of works.
And plus what, I mean, if we developed our own tests or our own standards, we could, we could put those up against other standards. I mean, uh, even if we're a year late, it would be nice to know, you know, what, you know, what the standard deviation is and whether we're, you know, on the mark or above the mark or where we are.
Yep, and that's part of this.
Comparing, you know, survey to survey.
Yep, and that's part of the score report card presentation a little bit, so I can beef that up and maybe talk more about those scores and try to tie in some MAP pieces if I can. I, I will tell you some of that's out of my wheelhouse, so I might need to work on some data analysis people to really show that correlation. But I can give you my take, at, at least on that, but I'd be happy to bring that back.
I, I, I think that would be, I think that would be really nice to have.
Sure.
I was just gonna say, I agree with that. And, um, what, what's kind of hung up here is if the only thing we have to measure high school students is the SATs, I'm just trying to figure out if there's another metric we could use, especially because Illinois recently passed some legislation where colleges in Illinois, at Illinois state-funded schools can't even look at SATs when making admission decisions. And I understand not all of the students are college-bound, but just seeing if there's some other metric, a standardized test or something that we could see sort of how students in Sycamore fare compared to the surrounding communities, I think would be really beneficial.
I do too. I do think that the, the nature of the high school beast lends itself more to kind of that formative, ongoing conversation around students. There's one building, all the staff from that department can kind of get together. So I do think there's just like those ongoing conversations around what's your unit test look like? What did this formative assessment look like? You know, we do that at the elementary level, but it's only like every other week if, if, at most, and it's virtual. So it's not as easy to get together to have that, those conversations district-wide or, or grade level-wide as they have at like the high school or the middle school. So I do think those are used, but like you said, it's not really a, a metric that you can just say, well, how does this compare to? Like you can't compare apples to apples with that outside of our district. But it is used very often to kind of approve instruction in our building. Often, you know, did, if we don't have a lot of students that do well on an assessment, teachers know, okay, this is something I need to reteach or I want to offer another opportunity or I need to hit it again next unit. So it's a much more fluid process. You know, there's a lot of conversation out there that kind of, to Jim's point, like when something's only, you get the results months after you give it, like how helpful that can that be in your instruction, you know? So I am a huge fan of if we're going to take the time out of our day to assess students, we've got to build in time to make that meaningful and useful. And the IAR and the S, and SATs and all that are, they are useful, but maybe not as useful as some of that local data for, for that level at least.
Were there any tools we could use, or maybe there's some software, I'm not sure, where we could monitor, let's say, seventh-hour English versus eighth-hour English, you know, taught by two different teachers and see if there's any vast differences?
Yep, so that's what they do as part of the PLC process. So, but it's done like within the district, like, so it's not.
Sure, that's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so it's not really like a warehouse sort of thing, but when they get together, like they'll all have given the same assessment, if not the exact same day, pretty close in the ballpark. And so one would be an eighth grade English, or an eighth-hour English class and one would be a second-hour English one class. So those people that teach that course, English one, would get together and talk about that data, how their kids did and what they're learning from it. So yes, that does happen.
Okay.
I use English because that's what I taught, but that happens in every subject area, so. Yeah, no, I, but I go there too, so. Obviously, if there are more questions as you look, if you want to email Steve, email me, whatever, I'm happy to answer anything I can, so. But switching gears just a little bit, talk about the Portrait of a Spartan. You've heard me bring this up before, but I can kind of say it's official now. And it's taken a little bit longer than we wanted to get this up off the ground and running. But I'm a, much like, I'm kind of a firm believer in if you're going to assess students, you may, have to make that meaningful. I'm more about take your time, make sure people understand this, make sure that we can really build capacity to implement it. Don't just rush it out and say, here, this is what we do now. So I think if you flip to the next slide, I shared this with our staff at the first day of school and this is just kind of a roadmap. And this is a tentative roadmap. Obviously, we want to be responsive to what's going on in the district, what our kids need, what our teachers need. But everybody likes to know there's a plan. And so there is, there's a plan. I went back to last year and we as an administrative team really spent the entire year working with the Institute for Personalized Learning. We went through the learners, a leading learner-centered education cohort and they really got us to understand what that looked like. They showed us some examples of what graduate profiles look like and we worked with Kate Somerville from up there to try to help us put one of those together. And I'll talk more about that process kind of as, in the next few slides. I won't go through every single thing here, but I do want to kind of draw attention to one of the things. If you look at these, you'll kind of see it. Each year there's something new introduced. So this year we're just kind of sharing, we're finalizing and sharing the grad profile. There aren't a lot of expectations to do much with this. But there are in a way, and I'll get to that kind of down the road because it's not entirely new. It's just kind of a different way of looking, some things, looking at some things we've done. But I really would like to highlight our Play Academy folks. It's Professional Learning and U is the acronym. And they really have gone above and beyond in trying to kind of be trailblazers in this learning and figuring out what this looks like in our buildings. I'll talk more about them on a further slide too. So that was kind of the add-on this year. Next year we'll really start to focus in on how do we Next year, we'll really start to focus in on how do we embed this graduate profile into our work? That can happen through curriculum revision, it can happen during PLC time, but how do we take that, which is, I think it's very analogous to our core values? And you'll see later that they overlap quite a bit, and those that aren't perfectly overlap, like, they, they fit right under like umbrellas. So that work has been going on, but we'll kind of put more of a spotlight on it. We'll start up another Play Academy for people that want to kind of, hey, I heard something cool was happening last year, I want to be a part of it. And then the following year, we'll explore kind of what a learner profile looks like. And I won't take your time out tonight telling you what all that is, that's a couple of years down the road, but you'll hear me in the future talking about that one. So talk a little about the Play Academy, just to kind of talk about what they did this year. Again, Kate Somerville, who led us as administrators through the process, came down and did a day-long bootcamp with them. Really just kind of a, a, a crash course on here's what personalized learning looks like, here's what learner-centered education looks like. Let's set some goals, let's talk about what your classrooms look like. And they developed kind of these personalized playbooks from there. So this is what I'm learning, this is kind of what I want to do in my course. I can't speak to everything they're doing, we'll have a meeting later in the week and one of the, or later in the month. And one of the huge things we'll talk about there is just kind of all the awesome things that are happening. But just the choice that students are being afforded. I know we've got some schools where we're blending grade levels and things like math, so we can really target where kids are at, regardless of their grade level. And so some of those practices that are really, what do our kids need and how do we change structures to get there? We're doing on a small scale right now, and the goal of this group then will be to talk about what worked, what didn't, what kind of questions are your colleagues asking you, and how do we scale this up so that everybody can access it? And they'll be just, they'll help design some of what that professional development looks like. We've got people from every level in that, in that academy, and it's, it's pretty cool. It's really energizing to go to those meetings. Do you want to click that one more time? This is our actual portrait, I know it's probably hard to see up there because of the colors, and it's bright in here, but you've got it on your screen as well. The purple, so what we did last year and at our February in-service day was ask three questions. You click one more for me. Oh, awesome. There's three questions that we asked at our in-service, and each, almost every single teacher gave us an answer to each of those three questions. My job then was to go through that and try to identify commonalities. So people back aside, from those questions, that were, that's where those purple kind of wedges come from. Those are those big overarching concepts that we as educators in Sycamore felt, these are the dispositions our kids need to have to be able to really engage in learner-centered education and be lifelong learners like we want them to be. And so from that work, we developed kind of that graphic, and then kind of, you know, also kind of developed these little phrases or little descriptions about what each of those are and kind of what role they play. And as you go through those, you will see, there's definitely some overlap in empathy, the effective communicators, the confidence. All those pieces kind of overlap with our, with our core values, and that was intentional. In a way, I think, it was intentional insofar as, this came from teachers, so it's not like I crafted it to be that way. But it's intentional in that, that's what they've been doing. So of course, that's gonna kind of come back up. And the ones that are kind of newer, awesome, and we can kind of use those to help us springboard to our next steps. So kind of just gave you an overview of that process. And then we shared our, our graduate profile, our February insert, or no, sorry, our October in-service. Kind of gave this sort of a conversation with them that I'm giving you tonight. And these are the kind of expectations. You'll see they're very minimal at this point in the game. We just want people to be able to take their time to understand it and engage with it in a way that makes sense to them before we say, now go do this a hundred times every day, which we won't say. But individually, just asking them to kind of explore the profile, what makes sense to them, how are they already doing this? And are there opportunities to do more? I can speak to some teachers that have said to me, like, you know, I really thought I was doing an awesome job of collaboration in my classroom, but as I looked at that and really read the description, I realized I have to build in some more opportunities. And so it is already impacting instruction, even though it's kind of just a dip-your-toe-in sort of a year. As a PLC, we asked them, as they kind of talked about their standards, they talked about their essentials, their I can statements, and all the learning opportunities they offer, are there ways that they can tie that right back explicitly to the different concepts from that profile? And again, this is very, like, it's not, it's not a go and make, show me all the ways you do this sort of task right now. It's just a, a dabble with this and start to see what it will work, will look like. We'll formalize that process as time goes on, like next year. And then administratively, we really, we practically started a, a really cool practice, I think, where we, as a team, when we visit our, our elementary buildings, we did it on our middle school, we have not yet done high school, right? We gotta do that, we did? What was I, okay. Yes, I remember that day. It's all a blur to me. So we've got two schools left to, to finish, but we'll have gone into every building as a team. And that does a couple of things for us. The goal of those visits is not to evaluate anyone, the goal is really to start looking for practices that support that profile. Long-term, we want to be able to give teachers a handbook and say, this is, if you're trying to work on collaboration in your classroom, here are things that are happening in our district, and here are people that are willing to help you and let you come into their classroom and see how they do it, so that we can learn from each other, because we've got some rock stars here. And I think we don't always tap into that as much as we can. So that's kind of one facet of those walkthroughs, is to try to find those practices and highlight those things. But the other facet is just us seeing it and being able to talk about it and get on the same page. It's really hard, I think, when we get going for, you know, a high school teacher to go down, or a high school admin to go down to an elementary building, or vice versa. There's just so much to do in the day. So to be able to take this time and do that and then have that conversation afterwards, it's the first year we're doing it. So, you know, it's, it's been, we've had some good ones, we've had some bad ones. I wouldn't say bad, but more contentious, I guess. But I think there's, that's a building capacity on our team to really understand what we're looking for and, and to highlight teachers along the way. So hopefully, it seems as though for staff and administration, like, that's been a positive experience this year, and we hope to keep it that way. One more time, that just brings us back to the plan, which I won't go through again, but just wanted to put that up there one more time so you could see kind of where we're headed with all this work, so. And with that, um, questions you may have, I'm happy to answer.
So, when you, when you're doing this profile focus and you, and you have teachers visiting, and, I mean, how, how do you know that the, the teacher that's presenting, that you, you classify as a rock star, really is a rock star?
So, one of the things from, that we get from the institute, and really we've developed, and I think we're, we're, we're truly doing more of right now, are kind of these, what's called look-for's. So they'll give us like, in a really learner-centered classroom, these are things you will see students doing, things you will see teachers doing. And those are kind of what we're out there looking for. So it's not just things we made up for ourselves, it's this, they're vetted and, and schools throughout the, the country really use them. So we're able to kind of see what the teachers are doing, and is this really fit under the learner-centered lens or not? That's also one reason why we wanted to, at least I wanted to, actually I kind of knew this is where we were going, to build some capacity last year with our administrative team, so that they knew what we were looking for when we would go out into those classrooms. That's kind of how we do that.
But again, I'm gonna ask you, I mean, is there, is there some kind of testing result that, that kind of shows the proof in the pudding?
I think we'll see it in all the assessments I talked about. I think there's, there's really, like, personalized learning, learner-centered education is new enough that there's not really research directly on it to say, here's how it impacts instruction. But what there is research on is when you can engage students, when you can give them voice and choice in their learning, that's when we start to see their, their assessment scores go up or their achievement go up. So that's what we'll look to see. I can tell you, I think this dovetails really nicely with some of the work that's happened in math throughout the years, just because we've got some really strong leadership there, and we've got some really motivated teachers and, and, and support systems there. And, and we saw, like, that, that is starting to outpace our ELA right now. So that's, we haven't implemented a new curriculum yet, we have firmed up our essentials, but we don't have any new resources to support it. So what's really changed have been the way teachers teach our math right now, and we're seeing that. There's not a specific assessment that you can give, and obviously, it's really hard to tie those growth things back to one single practice. So it's a little more anecdotal than it, than it can, than it, like, MAP gives us for actual academic things, but that's one of the places we can look. And again, the other one is just looking at those, this is more teacher-centered, but looking at those look-for's and how often are we seeing those happening in the classroom? And if we're seeing those a lot and our test scores are improving, there's gotta be some sort of correlation there that we'll dig into and try to find out more about. There's not like a, a nationwide assessment or anything right now that would give us that specific data.
I'm, I'm gonna jump in for just a second, because one of the things that Mike talked about that I think is really valuable, and we know this because we've done this, but I, I don't really know, the teachers know about it. Those walkthroughs have been super valuable, not for us just to observe what's going on, we've been super well-received. The teachers are excited to see us come into classrooms. The most valuable part of that for, for us as administrators is the conversation afterward, is we talk about what we saw. And a lot of that, a, a lot of the practices that we see are part of the, the model that we've already talked about. Now, it's not perfect across the board, there, you know, we also talk about areas of, of growth and improvement and how we as instructional leaders can start to lead that out, you know, in the future. But I think to your point, Jim, there really isn't a standard for this, but the most valuable piece is that conversation amongst the administrators who supervise the staff and evaluate them. We have a chance to talk about what we saw, what we think that means, kind of bounce that off of each other, and validate the practices that we're seeing in the classroom. So that's, that's a practice that's been super helpful for me. I, I don't want to speak for all of the, the leadership team, but that's something that's been pretty common, is having that opportunity to talk about what we saw, what we think that means, and how we can use that in the future. Both to identify teachers who can be kind of mentors to other teachers, but also where we can add a, add a little bit of support. So some of this we're kind of building as we go, because it's a newer practice, but that validation of what we're seeing in the classroom, I don't think we, we can do enough of that. So that's been, I just want to add that, because I think that's been really valuable for us to see that.
Is there a way to evaluate or sort of do a qualit- qualitative study of the students and see if they feel that a learner-centered approach is actually helping them, or they prefer it compared to a more traditional approach?
Yeah, and I think, so there's kind of two, and I want to talk about two things with that. There's multiple ways to do that, definitely as this becomes more of what we do as opposed to like year one. Student interviews are a huge part of the process, and when you go into the classroom to observe, you're not just standing there watching, we're talking to students. Like, do you know what you're working on? Did you have choice in this? Do you like what you're doing? Do you not? And so we're having those conversations already. The institute that we work with out of Wisconsin, they can come down and kind of do site visits. They're obviously, that's their entire world, so they are a little more knowledgeable than we may be. But they can kind of, they've got an entire rubric where they kind of go through, you know, back in the day of like accreditation. We'd have the highest, like, you guys probably remember some of that, like, we'd have teams that would come in and go do these massive walkthroughs through all of our buildings, and you make, you get your fancy sticker that says you're accredited by whatever organization that was. It's similar to those, where they'll come in and interview staff, interview students, interview administration, possibly even parents, and kind of try to get a handle on how well we're doing in areas or, or where we can improve. So there's different options that we can do to do that. I think we're a little early in the process right now. So, you know, it's no secret, I, I hate talking about this because I always feel like I bring it up. I came from Caiman, and they're a little further in the process than us. They've done that with the institute, but what they've also done, and I think what we can do as we get further into this, is kind of develop their own team that's really, has some expertise on what this should look like, and they can do walkthroughs. So we have, I've worked with their curriculum director a little bit, and we've talked about maybe trading back and forth some teams like that, so that they can see in other buildings and get ideas, but also like get feedback from somebody that doesn't work in their district, and same for us. So a lot of different ways we can hit that. I had a second point, but I don't think I remember it now, so we're good. It probably means I'm not talking about as much.
Um, I just wanted to ask, with the personalized learning styles that many different students have, with this program, does, now it's making it easier for the teachers, so that the teacher is dealing with a number of kids that are learning in different ways, is that putting more of a workload on the teacher?
I, I think, yes, yes, upfront, I think it does. But I, and I remember my second point, because it kind of touches on this. Because this is, the whole idea is around doing what's best for a student, like, the traditional doesn't just go out the window. Like, we're not doing anything wrong, and we're not trying to shift everything that teachers do to some new model. We do a lot of this already and have been, and there are some students that respond best to like that more traditional model, and we don't want to pull that away from them. And so I think that's, that's, that's a piece that I don't want to overlook, like, it's, we're not trying to say, hey, guys, what you've been doing is wrong, do it this way. This is an option we want to give you more kind of support in so that you can respond. But to your question about work, I do think there's some upfront work, and I think most of the people on our Play Academy would say that. But I think they'd also say that after that upfront work, it does get a little easier. There's kind of three phases of this. I don't like always the word that the, the institute uses, but they call it legacy instruction, which I think is what we're all kind of used to, and we can think about when we went through high school or, or, and middle, all the schools. And then that moves to individualized, and that's where it's really hard for staff. Because what individualized means is they're really thinking about the planning for every single student in their classroom. And we, that's not fair to ask of staff, like, any level, because that's too much. But where that, we can dabble in that and maybe differentiate a bit, so we're looking at groups of students instead. And where the rubber really meets the road is when the students are the ones coming to the teacher saying, here's what I learned, here's how I can show you that, and, and this is my idea for it. So that teacher becomes more of a, a coach and a collaborator with that student than having to feel like they've got to plan thirty individual lessons. So as we work through the process, there'll definitely be some, some growing pains, and that's one of the reasons we want to try to take it slow. Don't want to overwhelm our staff with, hey, do this all right now. But I do think people, as they do more and more, start to see like, this, this is good, I can use the work that I did this year in the future. I don't have to rebuild everything every year, and as more students become engaged, they take on more of the process too, that's the ultimate goal, so. But I don't want to say there's, it's not more work for our staff, because it is, but it, it's, I think they would say it's worth it, at least the ones that have done it so far.
So this means that students will have to take more initiative in their own learning process, because if teacher's working with Group A, but they're in Group B, teacher can't be in both places, they'll sort of have, students will have to do more self-teaching in a sense?
Kind of, um, well, it's, it's not, I think the way, so there's, there's still direct instruction with learner-centered education. So there's, a, a lot of times how it plays out will be, we use formative assessment, and we kind of see it, here's what I'm looking at, here's what I want to teach my kids. I'm going to assess them before I even start and kind of get a handle on who really is gonna need my help, who's like right in the middle and is probably gonna benefit from just my lesson today, and who might need a little more time with me. And so they teach the entire class, this is one way it can look, and it looks like this a lot, especially at the beginning, teach the entire class. Those students that are maybe ahead of the game, they're given an enrichment activity, or, or just, hey, prove to me that you know this, do this work, I'll be over there in a little bit. Students that are kind of on level are working on stuff to just reinforce the concepts they learned that day, and the students that are a little below level are getting maybe a little bit extra time for, from teachers. And that's a model that we've used for a long, long time, it's kind of like the station model of teaching. So, and, and we see it in classrooms now, it's kind of embedded in some of our blended programs at the high school and just different areas. It's, it's, it's one of the better practices, in fact, it's in kind of that, that, uh, the, the central ten that, that I talked about earlier today. Or, yeah, so that's, it's not like they're teaching themselves necessarily, but the older they get, the more opportunity they do have to explore things that they want to learn, and they can be a little bit more like self-driven there, but obviously the teachers at the, the younger the student, they need more guidance in that. So they're, they're not really self-teaching necessarily, but they're exploring things, then talking about those to the teacher, and there's an opportunity to still have that conversation, it just might be about, I'm learning about animals and somebody else is learning about trees, but we're still kind of learning the same concepts, if that makes sense.
Have you been able to see improvements in behavior when the students are frustrated by not learning or feeling like they're not?
Yeah, I think that, I think.
Not achieving what they would hope to achieve if they get discouraged.
I think that that's, I mean, that's, it's easy to say, it's really hard to measure, that when students are engaged, they'll have fewer problems. But that's not always the case, but I do think that if a student's not engaged in class, they're gonna be more likely to do something that they shouldn't be doing. And so really, one of the centers of this is trying to create opportunities to give students more ways to engage. So it does help, but there's also so much work that's going on in our district around kind of our social-emotional learning curriculum that it's hard to say which is having more impact. I tend to believe it's probably some of the social-emotional pieces right now, because it isn't so implemented. But it will, it will definitely, you see it, you talk to kids, and they do say like, I'm more interested in this class than I've ever been, or I actually like coming to school. And that's not across the board, obviously, but some kids are, and those that aren't, maybe, yeah, yeah.
These learner profiles are physical items?
It can be, um, there's a million ways you can do them. I think digitally is, was usually what people do, especially as students get older, but as they're young and they can't use the computer, a lot of them are like physically written out. One of the reasons that they're digital is to kind of grow with the student, and they can look back and see how they did, and they can see where they've grown at, and what their goals have been. But I guess that's, it's not really like in your hands, but it's something that they can refer back to.
Individualized to them, it's not, they don't just get this overall sort of graph, they get to sort of tailor it to what their goals are.
Exactly. When, when we get there, I'll, I'll, I'm planning on it, and I'll be happy to bring kind of what that learner profile is. My experience with it has been digital, and it was probably eight to ten slides, it had some guiding questions on there, some goal-setting. It asked things like, how do you learn best? What environments do you learn best in? Do you like to work by yourself or alone? And so really getting that student to think about, who are they as a learner? And yes, everyone's got their own.
Is this gonna be the type of program that's, that's gonna look at, I mean, I'm having trouble just even trying to phrase this, but looking back over many years, it seems like we take an initiative in math, and math scores go up, but English learning goes down, and then vice versa. And we just sort of.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering, I mean, is this sort of targeted at bringing both of those up?
Yeah, this is really more like a holistic philosophy, so every subject area can use it. There aren't really like. There aren't really like, I mean, there are when you dig into it. If you're a math teacher and you're looking for practices that will support you in the math classroom and trying to accomplish your goals, yes, there will be things written specifically for you, but the overall concept of this is, how do I, in whatever class I'm teaching, whatever subject I'm teaching, involve students more in the process? And so that's, I think, I don't, again, I don't, I say these things, I don't want people to think that our teachers aren't doing them. They are, but I think a lot of them are doing it just on their own volition, and they don't have the support they might want or all the knowledge they might need. So it's really just trying to embed those practices in, in everyone, and no matter what their subject is. And then they can kind of go down the rabbit hole of, I'm a math teacher, or I'm an English teacher, I'm a science teacher, what does this actually look like in my classroom? But the philosophy, it goes, it's kind of like, like differentiation's one that's been out for a long, long time. That happens in every classroom, regardless of the subject area, and all students benefit from that. And this is kind of that type of program.
I hope it succeeds mildly then.
So, so do I, but I think it will. I think those that are engaged in it really enjoy the work, and the students that are getting exposed to it are kind of seeing that it's, it's a little different, and they do. They, you know, it'll be time before our students develop all those dispositions, but as they start younger and they get older, like, do we can really do some cool things with students driving their own learning as they've got more of this background? Not that it can't happen at the elementary too, but just as they really kind of internalize those, those dispositions, they'll be able to do much, much more, and as they're more mature. Anything else? I tried to keep it short, I promise.
It's our fault.
No, it's okay, you guys know me, I love answering questions, so don't like taking it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Ice.
You're welcome.
Well, it's, it's, uh, it's in the superintendent's ballpark now.
Um, I have two items, a short one and a long one. Short one first, so policy alignment, um, to go back to the meeting, uh, our last meeting. This is, uh, these are policies that were, um, existing, tweaked them a little bit. Uh, we didn't get press updates, uh, but we tweaked them based on, um, input, you know, initially from Alex, but then input from the whole board. This is second reading, so I'd like to present these to the board, uh, for approval tonight on second reading, and then we'll go into it then.
Is there a motion to approve the, uh, policy realignment as presented?
So. Second.
Seconded discussion?
I guess, do, do you need direction from the board to, um, that we approve any changes that these policies being stated require, or is that just a given?
No, but we'll, we'll make sure that what we do is aligned with the policy. Uh, some of the things may be tweaked a little bit, some of the reporting may be tweaked a little bit. But now that they're in effect, um, you know, I'll work with Nicole, obviously, to make sure that reports reflect, um, board policy. As with anything, uh, we can comply with board policy statutes in a, in a variety of different ways. So ultimately, as things change, I'll ask the board to, to look at that. If you'd like things to be tweaked as, as a whole, let us know, and we'll do that. But, uh, I think for right now, just knowing that the policies have been approved. Take a look at these, uh, these financial reports, uh, next month, at the end of April. Um, and if after seeing them, the board collectively would like things tweaked a little bit, let us know, we'll do that.
I, I guess, to me, the bigger thing than the financial reporting change would be grade six, seven, or eight, students must receive a semester of civics. Is that something we already do, or are we going to have to completely revamp the curriculum?
We don't have to completely revamp the curriculum, that's new, uh, state law, so we need to be in compliance with that. Ooh, we are in, uh, we will be in compliance with that. Um, that's part of something like the ROE checks every couple of years when they do their compliance visit. We won't necessarily report that to the board, but we'll have to demonstrate to the regional superintendent when her team comes to, to the school district for a compliance check. And they check that as well as pages upon pages of other curriculum.
Okay, so it's kind of like, okay, this policy was put into effect, you guys need to stop learning about, you know, whatever they're doing in social studies and start doing civics to be in compliance, it's not that forced.
I could talk for many hours about frustrations on curriculum mandates because every time a new one comes out, we do have to figure out how do we work that in, and in addition, keep what we're doing already. Um, that's something we will have to work on, uh, but we won't need to report that to the board, the regional superintendent's office, so we'll check that.
Any other discussion? We can do this by voice phone, can't we?
Yeah, yeah, we're not spending a grueling amount or anything like that, just changing policy.
Uh, all in favor of, um, adopting the policy realignment as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carried?
Like I said, that was the short one, here's the, here's the long one. This is, uh, really, although I can talk a lot about the high school facility itself, but really, um, connects to a conversation we had back in January, actually, um, we're planning for the high school facility. So before I launch into this, just as kind of the, the subtle context, um, you may remember that as we talked about how best to address the high school facility, one of my recommendations is that the board considers, uh, the county school facility tax, occupation tax, um, or better known as the one percent sales tax, and I'll talk about that, why that is the case in just a second. Uh, I won't ask the board to vote on that tonight, or even take a straw poll on that tonight. Um, tonight, uh, this presentation is really a follow-up from a presentation that, uh, Nicole and Alex and I saw, hosted by the regional superintendent's office. Six of the seven districts in the county were represented there. Uh, it was just information about the county school facility sales tax and how it could potentially impact, uh, schools in DeKalb County. This could be, could be a mechanism to allow the district to continue to do some, some smaller facility projects, particularly at the high school, pay off some long-term debt, and get to a point, uh, in the future, beyond my time here, um, and have a, a much larger conversation about the high school. Right now, because of our per debt limit, we have limited capacity to sell bonds and to do significant projects. But if we could buy ourselves some time, pay off some debt, we'd be in a much better position to have a, a larger conversation about the high school, uh, as well as facilities in, in the district. So that's just to set the context here a little bit. Um, on March fifth, uh, the regional office hosted a county school facility tax meeting, or, or one percent sales tax. Um, so Amanda Christensen is the regional superintendent. She asked members from PMA Financial to come down and just do a presentation for all of the districts. Talked about, uh, a recommendation in January. Um, PMA is the group, but one of the benefits for us is that we already work with PMA Financial. So as they presented information, they are also members of PMA, I think all three of them are familiar with our, our finances within the district. So it's kind of a benefit for us to have them there, but they're really, if I remember correctly, they work with almost, if not all of the, the school districts in the county. Uh, there was interest from a, a majority of the school districts in the county, um, uh, learning about the county school facility tax. Um, and following that, each of the districts is kind of going to do what we're doing, although for a different purpose. Have a conversation internally about whether or not that's something they, that they would like to support moving forward. So want to talk just a, a little bit more detail about the presentation. I'll do my best, uh, Nicole can jump in, and, and Alex, if I miss something, please let me know. Um, if this initiative were to move forward in the county, school districts that represent the majority of the students in the county need to pass a resolution putting it on the ballot. Just because school districts pass that resolution doesn't mean that, that additional tax goes into place. Uh, it just means that it gets put on the ballot for voters then to weigh in on it in, in an upcoming election. Majority of the voters in the county, though, have to approve it for it to be enacted. So even if not all of the school districts in the county support it, a majority of the voters in the county have to, to pass it to implement it. It's called the one percent sales tax because it's limited at one percent. So it's one percent that would go on top of one per, or of the sales tax in the county. There are exceptions, we'll talk about that in a second. If it's implemented, and this is a decision that would have to be made, um, when we're to consider a resolution, it could be made in, in quarter percent increments, so it could be a quarter percent, half, uh, three-fourths, or a, a full percent. Uh, if it's implemented, the additional sales tax is collected by the department of revenue, and then periodically they distribute those funds back to the regional office, um, and then the regional superintendent disperses payments, uh, throughout the county. Based on preliminary projections, um, Sycamore would receive approximately two and a half million dollars in additional revenue that can only be spent on facilities with two exceptions. Just a couple of years ago, the law, um, about, uh, the governed county school facility sales tax was changed and, and added. The funds, uh, from the one percent could be used for mental health professionals and/or school resource officers. Those have been huge needs for schools in the state of Illinois, and the legislature passed, uh, those two exceptions to, to this law.
And for us, that two point five million is based on one percent, right? Assuming the one percent passes, not point two five.
Based on one percent, yeah, yeah. The exceptions are the, uh, the exceptions to the additional sales tax. So these are really important. If the district or the districts in the county wanted to pursue this, these are things that would be important to communicate and make sure that the public knows about. So that one percent does not, um, go into effect if you're purchasing a car, truck, and ATV, a boat, or an RV, a mobile home, unprepared food, there's probably some gray areas because there's a lot of different ways to purchase it, but essentially, um, primarily groceries. So if you go to Ivy, um, Meyer, and you buy food that's not prepared, it's canned, um, the one percent does not apply to that. If you go out to eat, um, if you go to Tom and Jerry's, that's food that is prepared. There's an additional up to one percent sales tax on that. Um, drugs, whether it's over the counter, um, or prescription medications or vitamins, uh, are, are exempt from the one percent. Farm equipment and parts and farm inputs are exempt from the additional one percent, um, sales tax. And then services, which are not taxed in Illinois yet anymore, so those are one, uh, would not see the additional one percent. Um, just some timeline sorts of things. So if districts that represent the majority of the students in DeKalb County pass the resolution to put this on the ballot, if, if the, the voters in DeKalb County pass it, the majority of the voters in DeKalb County pass it, um, takes about four months typically, uh, for funds to, to be received by the department of revenue process and then sent back to the county. Um, there is an exception, um, the additional sales tax is only implemented a couple of times during the year. So, um, in our case right now, because of timing, there is an election, um, there's an election coming up, uh, really soon that we wouldn't be able to put on the ballot for that. But the one in November, there is time to put the question on the ballot in November, as well as next March. But in either case, the district likely wouldn't receive funds until, uh, next November. Just because of the timing, the additional sales tax put on, um, takes longer if it were passed in, in November than it would if it was passed in March. School districts, school districts can use those funds, um, and they can sell bonds for large projects and dedicate those funds to pay off those bonds. Uh, they can use those funds for pay-as-you-go projects, so if there's a million dollar worth of work, we know we're going to get about two and a half million, you don't have to take out bonds for that, you can pay it as you go. Or you can abate property taxes. You can do a combination of those things. So you could sell bonds for a large project, but only dedicate a portion of the funds for that. You could do some of the funds for pay-as-you-go projects, and you could set aside some of those funds to abate taxes, property taxes every year. There are other neighboring counties discussing the, the county school facility sales tax. In fact, Oboe County has it on ballot in March, uh, so we'll see the outcome of, of that vote, uh, here soon. Um, there are other neighboring counties who are in discussion but really haven't committed one way or another. There is time for the, the question to be placed on the November ballot. Uh, the next opportunity after that would be next spring, uh, in April. Um, the next step for Sycamore is just to, uh, to mull this over. Um, potentially have some more discussion about it, and then make a decision as to whether or not, um, we as a district would like to be part of ongoing discussions, um, leading up to a potential decision to, to say yes, and we'd, we'd like to pass a resolution, at least put it on the ballot, let voters know if they want it, or for whatever reason we don't feel like it's, it's right for us, and the answer is no. Um, like I said, uh, earlier, not asking for a decision tonight, um, but that would be the next step. Would the board like to be, you know, part of continuing the conversation, um, and at least not rule it out at this point? Be part of those conversations, and then make a decision at some point in the future. I'm going to pause there, though. See if there are any questions or comments. And Alex and Nicole, did I miss anything?
Thanks. So Stephen, if I'm understanding this correct, it, it, you had the key words there, like, the schools representing the majority of students in the county. So because of how our county is structured, or however you want to call it, like basically DeKalb one, DeKalb plus one is going to get it on there pretty much? Is that, is that, that's pretty much what it comes down to?
So part of the presentation, now PMA did a really good job, a really thorough job. And part of the presentation included a, a list of all the districts in the county, actually a list of all the districts who have students in the county. Um, but there are only seven whose, whose address is, is within DeKalb County. Kalb represents forty-nine point seven percent or something like that. So, uh, DeKalb School District four twenty-eight almost by itself has the majority of the students. Um, without DeKalb, uh, it takes nearly everybody else. Um, but one of the things that was also discussed, um, at that meeting, was that even if DeKalb, for whatever reason, decides not to support it and pass the resolution putting it on the ballot, that sends a really strong message to the community, to the voters of DeKalb County, um, most of which you believe in DeKalb, right? So, um, I think all of the districts recognize, um, there's part of that decision has to do with whether or not they feel it's right for their district. Um, but I think it's also important to keep in mind the impact on all of the voters and all the, the, the residents of DeKalb County. If Kalb is the biggest, Sycamore is second biggest at about twenty-five percent. You know, Kingston is the third biggest, forget what that percentage is, but then it's first to, to tail off. What was it?
Ten point four.
Ten point four. So, um, how many districts, districts does it take to get it on the ballot is one thing, but then how does that play out in terms of what voters think, you know, going, going to polls, get, if it gets put on the ballot?
It's completely hypothetical, and probably even stupid to ask, but if, if it got passed, let's say Sycamore was at, we were at it, we just didn't want any part of this, like, we couldn't reject the fund, like, we're going to get the funds then, right? Isn't that basically what it comes down to? So.
So let's say hypothetically, let's say enough districts, uh, pass the resolution, their boards pass the resolution, put it on the ballot, uh, but not necessarily everybody gets on the ballot, voters approve it, every district gets their cut, no matter what. So even if that board, uh, or that district chose not to support it, if it's passed by a majority of the voters in the county, every district gets its cut. Um, and then the decision is what, what to do with that money, again, if the project, the bonds, the taxes.
So we're going to abate it back, effectively nullify it.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Impact of this envelope, that's sad.
I imagine they didn't talk, say anything about grants. I know Jim brought up last time about not, possibly not being able to receive grants if we're receiving this tax money. Um, did they say anything about that at the meeting?
I'm not aware of, of any grants, um, that we would not be able to apply for just because we received the, these funds. But they didn't bring that up, uh, and that's a question that, that we could certainly ask, it wasn't quite explicitly, but I'm not aware of any grants that, um, we would be, um, able to, to, to apply for just with, just because we received this.
And then with the economy and things getting worse, if it's only on specific things, if we could decide to stop eating out, and then the money wouldn't be there anyway. And once a tax gets on the books, it's never coming off, so there's no going back once it gets on. I'm just bringing up some pros and cons to this. Perhaps it's better for the community than, uh, a property tax, you know, than paying a higher property tax? But yeah, just a couple of thoughts.
Yeah, and I think what makes DeKalb County, um, kind of unique, not all the counties in, in the state have a large university. So we have a lot of students who reside here for nine months out of the school year, but don't live here and, and don't property, pay property taxes. So in some ways, there are advantages to making a, a, a sales tax, it's not. So in some ways there are advantages to making a, a sales tax, it's not a tax on property owners. And if you obey taxes, then that, that shifts the burden off of property owners. Same time people who live in DeKalb County and go out to eat in DeKalb County are still paying it. So there's the argument that they're getting hit twice. I think because of some of the uniqueness and the demographics of DeKalb County, that's something to consider. Particularly if it gets put on the ballot, I think there would be, need to be a communication, you know, and, and effort to really make sure that voters understand what the tax means, how we as a district would, would use it. Certainly there's a strategy, you know, county-wide. But I, I think pros and cons to, to put that out there so that voters know, if we don't need tax, here's the potential plus and the potential minus. You're right, I don't know that any county has put this on and then it's come off.
Oh, it won't.
It's, i- i- if they're, you know, definitely in. It's really modeled after the one percent sales tax in Iowa that was passed in all of the counties in Iowa. So this is now statewide in, in Iowa. It's not coming off, but it, it, it's been a huge plus for schools. And one of the things we talked about with the high school is that there, there aren't funds coming from the state for large facility projects. That's really something that the state has put on local school districts to figure out. And without the, the capacity to do that, I think we in specific need to kind of look at all options possible to pay for what the facility needs.
This would be a fairly large burden on, on industry though, I mean, other non-service type industries. Any kind of manufacturing that goes on here. It wind up paying an extra one percent, right?
If they're purchasing supplies that aren't exempt in DeKalb County, yes.
What if they're selling?
If it's a manufacturer who's selling in DeKalb County.
Yeah.
They don't pay that one percent. What, what will happen is they get, they get the pass on the consumer. But they have to weigh the benefit or really the negative of, a lot of people have to pay that one percent additional tax. Are they willing to pay that for this product? You know, for, for this, this meal, this food, this whatever manufacturer.
So potentially cuts into their, their profits.
Yeah.
It's kind of a double-edged sword though, because if we were to hypothetically pass a referendum that goes to property taxes, those same industries will have a bigger bill. So, you know, it, it's just bringing in additional revenue one way or another, right? And I, I guess the only advantage that this has that I thought was pretty significant is the fact that we have NIU in our community and this is a kind of a rare opportunity in Illinois to bring in some revenue that's not local because of those students and they're purchasing in, in our county from out-of-county money. You know, because if we do some sort of increase in property taxes, that's a hundred percent local, locally generated revenue. This is not. So to me, that's a big plus.
I, I would agree with that. And I think part of our, our communication campaign, for lack of a better word, is especially with the high school, it's kind of the flagship building of the district because of its size. Every, so much happens at, at the high school. It's a building that's in need of, of some significant work. One way to get that done in a shorter amount of time is, you know, potentially this one percent, paying off long-term debt and then looking at something more significant in the future. If that doesn't, if the district decides to be part of that, it doesn't pass. We could talk about a property tax referendum, well, assuming that doesn't pass. The other alternative is, you know, any significant work that we want to do to the high school really has to wait for, for several years. So I, I think that's part of educating voters, just on what the district would use those funds for. And really kind of seeking their input, here are the options, here's what we feel like needs to be done. We've heard this from architects, we've heard this from our facility folks. Here's the options to pay for that. You are really in a position now voters to tell us what you would like us to do or, or what you're willing to live with. So I, I think that would need, for Sycamore especially, would need to be part of what we communicate to the, to voters and how we educate them in terms of how we would potentially use those funds. Because we, we may then have to have a conversation about property tax referendum for, for buildings. Or everybody just needs to know, nothing significant is going to happen at the high school especially, but then also at some of the other buildings, these may have to be delayed until we get to a point where, you know, we're in a better spot in terms of debt service.
One thing written through the comments from our survey that was sort of recurring in multiple sections is I do not want my property taxes to go up. I do not want my property taxes to go up. You know, I, I guess from that feedback, it seems like this might be a better route just from our, the community's viewpoint as to, you know, our, our tax rate. While not the highest in the county, is pretty high, but that's not any, at any fault of the district. That's just the way the state of Illinois funds education, it's local. But this, like I said earlier, will perhaps bring out an opportunity to bring some not local revenue here. And I think that's, you know, that because we have the option to take.
I wouldn't expect them to be lining up thanking you for a nine percent sales tax rate in the county either.
No, I, I wouldn't think so. Yeah, I wouldn't think the distinction between the property tax and the sales tax is going to happen. And there's, you know, there's, the big player is not at the table. The big player is the state of Illinois and they're not at the table.
That's the problem.
Well, my fear is the more of us that pass this, the easier it makes the state feel like with what they're doing.
Yeah, the more, the easier, right, exactly, exactly. The more we fall into their, into their plan, which is to fund more educational resources from taxpayers, property taxpayers.
Does this tax get assessed on online, sales as well? They talked about that.
They did not.
I don't know if it processes Amazon, all the rest go through.
Actually, they did talk about that and it does go online, I mean, I'm like, anything that sold in that company. Which is new, is it when the, that's, that's new within the last, a week, a year or two ago, that online sales have been taxed. So we meant the law was initially written, that, that wasn't an issue, but it would be added on to online sales that happen.
Didn't we see any change?
And they'll probably add things to it. That's another thing they'll probably do. That's what they do.
So, so again, the.
They will probably add things to it beyond what they're saying no tax right now. So add little, little by little, they'll add it, they'll add it to other things.
I'll, I'll tell you, one of my biggest fears is, is seeing what happened, has happened in the past with the state when they bring in a new dedicated revenue source or something, is they find a way to take other sources away from that. And my fear is we find some source for two and a half million dollars a year and then we've got other groups come into our, our regular budget and say, well, now you've got, now you've just freed up another two million in your general budget for X, Y, Z cause because you, you've got that money coming in from somewhere else. And so I fear that it doesn't put us in a better position because of that.
I think because it's facility-related and we can't pay for, and pay for staff salaries, dentists and.
Right, but it means we don't have to carve facilities now out of the general.
Well, sure. But I think in, in, in some districts, in positions that we make that distinction, we're not. At least in terms of significant work at the high school, we're not in that position. You know, if, if, if there's not a way to figure out how to fund significant work in the short term, yeah, I, I don't know that I know any other route to do significant work at the high school for the next probably fifteen years plus.
Yeah, I just don't think that DeKalb County, out of every county in Illinois, passing a one percent sales tax to fund facility improvements at their school or abate property taxes is going to do a thing for the state's funding formula and, and their allocations for education. DeKalb County is exempt from this, they can't even pass this and they're kind of the biggest player in the state by, by a lot.
Yeah, they get the most money. They take a lot of our money.
So.
Yeah, does, does that go into any of their E, EDF formula? So that they don't look at us suddenly as having two and a half million more resources and say, no, you don't.
Are we sure that they don't? I mean, I, I have no idea what that formula. It never seems like it works the way it's supposed to, so. I'm afraid that, that they're working it.
They got a lot of missing money over there that they can't explain or what.
Yeah, our, you know, our status has changed seemingly overnight from time to time with them.
So it's, it's.
I worry about that.
So it's not really the size of the district that passes it, it's the number of voters. And you're just assuming the voter turnout is proportional to.
Yeah, I, I think we are one of two, two for sure, maybe three districts in, you know, in the specific because of the size of the district, the number of residents. You know, that, that's kind of unique, but you're right, it's the, it's the majority of voters in the county. If it gets passed, that, if, if the majority of voters in the county pass it, all the districts will benefit from it, yeah.
Do, did they happen to share or have you seen data on how making purchases from a sales tax are distributed throughout the county? Like I get how we receive our money, I guess my, my question where I'm going with this is, are we disproportionately benefiting from commerce in DeKalb? Because that's where more of that is taking place. They're doing more shopping than Sycamore residents and therefore this tax is hitting them harder and we're collecting more of that and it's super billable.
Yeah, I, I can, and I think this answers your question. I think all of the, the residents, all the school districts would benefit from DeKalb because that's the biggest community in, in the county and where a majority, therefore the shopping is getting done. But there, there's a lot of places to shop in Sycamore too. So I don't know that all the other counties benefit as much, maybe Genoa. You know, we're on the way to, to DeKalb, I think you could probably make that argument, but I think everybody's really benefiting from DeKalb in the long run. If, again, a couple of us there consent about it if it's passed.
Well, it has nothing to do with where the goods are purchased in the county. They take the total of all the goods purchased and then multiply that essentially by point two five, point five, point seven five for one percent. And then it's first that more.
Yeah, but it's where it's generated, so.
Yeah, but I go to, you know, Panda Express in DeKalb, I'm still Sycamore going, it, it doesn't really work like that because the residents of the county go to different places to purchase their goods, especially DeKalb. But it's not taking away from DeKalb because we're already owned there.
It could if it just happened that Sycamore residents, for example, weren't doing a lot of shopping in the county. Were, were shopping disproportionately less than the DeKalb population maybe because more Sycamore people commute out of town for work or eating their lunches or whatever. I, I don't know, just, I'm just curious.
I think it, the, this kind of came up at the discussion at the meeting, I, I think there are some communities more towards the south of the county that, especially southeast, closer to east, might head, you know, to, to the county to do some shopping. But I, I still think by and large, most residents of DeKalb, kind of DeKalb is the closest and it's got almost everything there.
I mean, the only saving grace here is that even at nine percent sales tax and choke up thinking about that, it's still lower than, lower or equal to what the neighboring counties will be, I guess. Doesn't get me excited. So Stephen, all you're looking for tonight is like, hey, do you want to still be a part of the conversation, right?
If, if you know that tonight, that's great.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I, I'm going to follow up and ask, we just want to continue to be part of the conversation for now?
I mean, I'll just say it from my perspective, I have no part of continuing to be a part of the conversation and knowing what's going on as opposed to being on the outside, just sitting here for somebody to knock on your door and say, hey, guess what's going to happen? So that's just the way that I'm looking at it. But what are the next steps then moving forward from this? Is that, I mean, at some point we would have a vote on if you want us to move forward, right? But like, does, does all the districts get together at some point, say, okay, we're going to move this thing forward? Everybody take your individual votes, we'll all come back with our, what consensus is and go from there?
So if there's enough, say this carefully. If there is enough interest from districts who represent the majority of the students in the county
Sure.
want to move this forward, then every, every, every county or every school district is going to need to take a vote. Or at least I think take a public stance on, we're willing to pass the resolution or we're not. So right now I think it's a matter of are we interested in continuing to be part of the conversation? But at some point, if there's enough school districts that want to move forward, but that the board will need to make a decision on whether we go. But if passing the resolution, they're saying that you don't want to pass the resolution for whatever reason.
Who's the entity that puts it on the ballot?
If a majority of the districts pass the resolution putting it on, the majority, the majority of the districts who represent the majority of the student seat in the county pass the resolution, it goes to the county clerk and, and the county clerk's office puts it on the ballot. County clerk in this case, Tasha, sends it what, need to certify that it's enough districts who represent that majority. She would be the one to use that math to make sure that, that this majority, it means the standard way on the ballot. So county clerk's office is the entity that would put it on the ballot.
So it's effectively the board's putting it on the.
Yes. It used to be that, that boards needed to approach the county board when the county board made the decision, but that was changed a couple of years ago. Now it's the, the school districts who have that, you know, opportunity.
Um, from one of the, I know that Chris already asked, but it says the district reserve, receives revenue for only those students living in the county. Then it says the student does not have to attend a school located in the county. So I understood only students attending public schools qualify, but those top two statements seem to contradict each other a little bit. This was what.
That's the PMA presentation.
Yeah, this was the PMA presentation from, from your email.
So this, so the first point is it's students who are enrolled in the district and live in, in DeKalb County. And we have students in Kane and Kendall, just Kane. Small number, but the students that attend Sycamore but live in Kane County are not included in the calculation for Sycamore.
Okay.
They have to reside in DeKalb County, not only reside within our school district, but reside in, in DeKalb County. The second part, and I might, I might need to go back and look at PMA's presentation.
Or if we had a building in Kane County and those students live in DeKalb County, but they went to, let's say north, north school was in Kane, we'd still get the money for them if they lived in DeKalb regardless of where the school building is located.
Even though they're going over the border like the other ones in the first statement.
Correct, yes, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, I get it.
Live here but go to public schools.
Yeah, I was a little confused reading it because.
And for us, I think the Outlay students are the, are, are a really good example because those are students who most likely live in, in DeKalb County. But for whatever reason, are attending school, we have students like that, who attend a school that's outside of DeKalb County. But because they live here, the residences of DeKalb County, they, they would still go out.
Okay.
But it's a bigger deal if they, which is.
Makes us less than one percent.
Multi-counties.
Just makes it less than one percent.
No, that makes sense, no. Kind of didn't yesterday. Wow.
Any more questions for me?
Guess not.
If you have additional questions, please let me know. If I don't know the answer, I'll give them for you. So I, I would only ask at this point to just be thinking about whether or not we as, as a district would like to be part of continuing conversations. You know, follow up with, with the, also, I mean, I think we were one of the first school districts to have a school board meeting after that presentation last week. Need to check where all the other districts are in terms of their schedule. But at some point, I think the superintendent will have some conversation and just kind of pass on and pay, kind of where we're at and go from there. So if you have questions, let me know and I'll follow up.
Do you know of any other, like, city implemented sales taxes that might be dropping off in the, not so distant future?
I'm not aware of any.
Um, this isn't the same topic, but about the grants, like I was really impressed with how the Oscar director put together that grant. And I'm just wondering what more can we do to that effect, you know? And I'm just wondering what more can we do to that effect, you know, regarding grants? Cause I'm sure there's grant money out there. If we can find someone willing, maybe for not too much money or willing to donate time.
I, I know some school districts have kind of been fortunate to find professional grant writers who are willing to do that. Sometimes they volunteer their time, sometimes they're compensated, you know, a certain percentage of the grant. Kind of makes sense, because if they didn't outright the grant and get the grant, the district wouldn't have the money to start with. So there are opportunities like that, but we also, I think, communicate to all of our staff, administrators, teachers, but administrators and throughout the district. Grant opportunities, there are a ton of them out there, sorry to keep up with all the grant opportunities that are out there. Some of them we don't qualify for based on our demographics or the other characteristics of our community. But we can always be communicating to our staff and when grant opportunities are out there and encourage them to a lot. That's all I have, Mr. Dombek.
Okay. Open discussion on future agenda items. Issues, objections, questions?
I just, this isn't, we'll take a moment, I have, I went through some of those responses from that longer document. And then I just sort of tried to come up with some general.
Oh, that's nice.
General themes that popped up repeatedly. Sure, I don't know if that'll be helpful for you guys or not, but I felt, I made it for myself.
Yes, it's easier, cause I'm trying to read it and compare it and I like this.
Thank you.
Very nice.
So this is just if someone said something more than once, pretty much, I wrote it down.
Did you notice all the bullying?
Get that bullying back up?
That's kind of disturbing, yeah.
We can send a copy to Christian and Michael if you'd like.
Sure, I think I emailed it to them.
Okay.
But.
That's fine.
Any other issues? Or discussion or agenda or? Is there a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the purchase of lease of real property? Or the use of public land?
So moves, Jones?
Seconded.
And then seconded, both of them?
Jones?
Yes.
Charlo?
Yes.
Devin?
Yes.
Bradus?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
We need to add that other thing that came up.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, so just kind of for members of the audience, just to know this, we had executive session planned for, this is the original agenda, but we did add a personnel matter. So the final agenda was amended to include that, but yeah, we can talk about it.
All right, we're back in open session and. Is there a motion to return?
So moves, Jones?
Seconded.
Moves and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.